Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Yerkes.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very pleased to introduce the first item on my report this evening, and that involves the good work of our Sustainability Commission. As you know, and audience members may know, a couple of years ago, the city council created the city's first-ever Sustainability Commission to begin working on preserving the city's great history, all of our natural assets, and looking toward the future in a bigger and better way. So we've been hard at work, and I really want to compliment the commission, who's really been doing the heavy lifting with what you're about to see. So with us this evening is our city planner, Chris McLeod, who's going to start off our effort, and then also the chairman of the Sustainability Commission, Nathan Inks, is with us, and commission member Mark Graff as well, and they've been integral to getting the report and the strategic plan to the point it is this evening. I think you'll be very impressed with this. So I'd like to turn it over to our city planner, Chris McLeod.
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Vanderpool. Hopefully, my portion of this will be very short, and you'll get to hear from the more prominent member, Mr. Inks, our chairperson of the Sustainability Commission, about the work that, as the manager has indicated, they've done an incredible job to this point, creating a very viable sustainability plan for the city as a whole. So the Sustainability Commission members, Nathan Inks is our chair, Mark Graff is our vice chair, Jonathan Matthews is our secretary, Mabushara Fergie is one of our members, and as of just recently, unfortunately, we do have an opening now on our Sustainability Commission, where a recommendation will be coming forward to you in the near future for fulfillment of that position. But Ashley Frank and Rolanda Robinson were both past members that contributed greatly to the creation of the plan over the course of the last year or so. Just to give you a brief timeline in terms of where we've kind of come from, most of you have lived this, so you're a part of it, but just to refresh your memory, so the Sustainability Plan actually was born out of an intern work done in the summer of 2019 that created the initial framework that we basically created our work plan from and moved forward. Sustainability Commission ordinance came forward in March of 2020, members were appointed in summer of 2020. The draft review started in September of 2020, shortly after all members were on board. And fast forward all the way to 2021, coming through the pandemic, we worked all through that via Zoom, which was kind of an interesting way of creating a plan via the virtual reality world. But plan adoption came June 21. Distribution to council and administration was July of 21. City council presentation is obviously tonight. Then we're going to obviously hopefully have ongoing discussions, not only with the council, but also with administration and other applicable boards. That's obviously ongoing, and then implement, revise, and adapt. As a sustainability plan, it has to be sustainable from the standpoint that it ever grows and ever evolves with what's going on amongst the city itself. I'm not going to read all these either. These are the sustainability goals found within the Sustainability Ordinance, Commission Ordinance, I'm sorry, but we felt that these are the kind of the founding and guiding principles of the overall Sustainability Commission, and this commission has done its best to abide by these in the creating of the Sustainability Plan, as well as the other recommendations that they brought forward, which have included recommendations on tree preservation, as well as curbside recycling. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nathan Inks, our chairperson, to kind of talk about where the plan came from and what's contained within the plan from this point.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Vanderpool, for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Mr. McLeod indicated, the plan initiated with a draft proposal from an intern, Alexander Bahorski, who interned for the city a few years ago. We took that plan and then incorporated a number of other resources to draft the plan. Those included resources from Eagle, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, the EPA, the city's master plan, the city's non-motorized transit plan, the IPCC report, the Visioning 2030 Plan, as well as the United Nations Sustainability Goals, and I'll talk about those a little bit more in a minute. Next slide. So we began working on the plan in September of 2020 and adopted the official plan in June of this year. Next slide. As indicated, one of the major resources that we used in drafting the plan were the Sustainable Development Goals from the United Nations. There are 17 goals that they developed, and the commission went through and identified 11 of those goals that we thought were relevant for purposes of our mandate from the Sustainability Ordinance, and those are good health and well-being, clean water and sanitation, affordable and clean energy, decent work and economic growth, industry, innovation, and infrastructure, reduced inequalities, sustainable cities and communities, responsible consumption and production, climate action, life on land, and partnership for the goals. What we then went through is broke down, next slide, went through and broke down the plan into four primary sections that address different issues. The first was natural assets, the second was sustainable mobility, the third was sustainable development and land use, and the fourth was environmental stewardship. We also had an executive summary at the very beginning of the plan, and this is where we went through and gave an introduction of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and then we concluded the plan with a section about how to implement the plan, as well as a conclusion. At the beginning of each section, we went through and again highlighted the different UN Sustainable Development Goals that we thought were relevant to that section, and you can see an example of this at the bottom left of the page for the Section Two, which was the natural assets. We then went through and provided a narrative of different issues that were relevant to that section, provided references in the form of footnotes in that section, and then concluded the section with a summary of how the information in that section applied to the 2030 vision statement, as well as the guiding principles. Finally, we concluded the section with a number of suggested actions and accompanied those suggested actions with a list of responsible parties. Those responsible parties will be people that the planning commission, along with the assistance of the city planner, identified as the people or entities who would be responsible for deciding whether or not the city is going to implement those suggested actions or actually implement the suggested actions. Originally, we had contemplated providing priorities alongside of each of the suggested actions. We ultimately decided not to do that. Instead, we wanted to get feedback from city council and find out what council wanted the commission to work on before we went through and prioritize the different action items. And that brings us to the next steps for the Sustainability Commission. Those are, we're going to be having additional discussions with city council at the strategic planning session in early 2022. However, the commission is more than happy to sit down with members of council or administration if they have any questions before then. We're always willing to have a discussion and want to have ongoing dialogue. Once we have additional guidance from city council and city administration about what they would like us to prioritize, we'll go through and give some priority to the different action items that were listed in the plan itself. Of course, we will continue working on any tasks that council or administration assigns to the commission. For example, before the city council adopted the revised tree preservation ordinance earlier this year, that was sent to the Sustainability Commission for review and a recommendation, and then we'll continue working on the tree inventory that the city is planning in conjunction with Green Macomb and the Davy Resource Group. Finally, at the end of the Sustainability Plan, there was a quote that the commission had selected, and we thought that this was relevant to end the conversation hereon, as we thought that it summarized some of the important principles from the Sustainability Plan, and that was from author and environmental activist Wendell Berry, who said, "Whether we and our politicians know it or not, nature is party to all our deals and decisions, and she has more votes, a longer memory, and a sterner sense of justice than we do." With that, again, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now. Otherwise, we look forward to continuing the conversation and the months to come.
So, Mayor, I just wanted to highlight too, before city council, if you do have any questions, a lot of the plan is already coming to life in different ways, shapes, forms. As Mr. Inks said, with respect to our tree preservation ordinance that city council approved, that's a giant step in the right direction, increasing our tree canopy, which is so important. So we also have money allocated, although we still have to go through further review, and ultimately, city council has to weigh in and sign off on this, and we have to go through more public engagement, but we have hundreds of thousands of dollars now allocated to increase our tree canopy through the American Recovery Plan, better known as ARPA. So we look forward to bringing that forward to city council and further engagement with the Sustainability Commission on it. In addition, many of our non-motorized trail systems have been improved and extended, the bike hike trail system, and we're looking at even bolder, bigger, and better extensions of that system as well, not to mention the sidewalk gap program that we're filling in. We've had a robust debate about that on Mound Road. Thankfully, we are closing the gaps there, and we've closed so many other gaps in the city, making steady progress. The Clinton River now is open for navigation. It's become just a huge asset for the city of Sterling Heights. And not to mention all of our building improvements. When we have a building improvement of any sort now, we look at best practices with respect to energy efficiencies and window treatments and HVAC and lighting, electrical and plumbing and so on, water conservation and the like. Even in our development plans now, we consider bioswales and making better use of natural assets to treat our stormwater runoff and so on. So I just wanted to thank the commission and our city planner for their continued good work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpool, if I could, if there are any colleagues of mine on the council who have any questions, Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. Inks and Mr. McLeod. Could you go back to the slide that has the 17 goals of the United Nations? I have a question regarding one of those. Please. Thank you. So, as Mr. Vanderpool mentioned, we do have a very lovely and wonderful waterway, the Clinton River. So I'm just curious why the goal number 14, "Life Below Water," was not one of the goals that you took up?
Life below water from the UN is focused on oceans. Anything that is an inland waterway, such as a lake or river, is covered under "life on land."
Okay, so that does explain that. So that's good, because of case that does come up in questions, I will be able to answer that appropriately. So thank you. That was my only question, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Inks.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to our presenter. Who wrote the actual document that we were handed on?
So the draft started with the intern Alexander Bahorski, and then all of the commissioners went through and made revisions to that, made significant revisions. So there was no one single person who wrote any, the entire document. It was contributions from all the commissioners, as well as contributions from the Office of Planning.
Yeah, I will say to you and the city planner, that was an excellent document. It's one of the best documents I've read in a long time, especially when it comes to technical issues as well as policy issues. You know, they can be sometimes a little heavy weighted, a little hardest to log through. I really enjoyed actually reading the document myself, so whoever, all of you should be congratulated for writing such a well-collaborated document, and I will tell you this, I made a lot of notes, and I look forward to our future discussion as a city council, along with the Sustainability Commission, on making Sterling Heights a better place. Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We look forward to it, too.
Anyone else, Council? If not, thank you, Mr. Inks. Good presentation. As always, we appreciate the report and the work that your commission is doing. So thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. Graff and Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one last item on my report, and just a reminder that a week from today will be the State of the City. It will begin at 5:00 at the Farmer's Market Pavilion just across the street. This event is sponsored every year by the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, so we look forward to seeing everyone there. It gives the mayor an opportunity to highlight all the accomplishments over the past year, and also noting some of the challenges as well, but then also looking forward to the many initiatives that are outlined for the next year. There'll be refreshments available. The general public, of course, is invited. You simply have to go to the chamber's website or call 586-731-5400 to register. There's no cost to register, but we do need a head count. We have hundreds that have already registered, so the event will certainly be well attended. So again, that is next Tuesday, a week from tonight. The weather's supposed to be beautiful. Starts at 5:00. We look forward to seeing everyone there. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Well, I haven't checked, but I hope you didn't jinx it, Mark. We'll be there, rain or shine. So I hope you will be, too. Looking forward to that. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's Consent Agenda? If not, Council, this is a mayoral appointment to an opening on the Planning Commission, term ending June 30, 2024. A number of very qualified and eager applicants. I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of them, but I believe the best, the highest qualified and the best candidate is Brandy Wright, who happens to be in attendance in the audience here tonight. So I would appreciate it if somebody could make the motion to nominate Brandy Wright for appointment to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
We're resolved, on the advice of the mayor, to nominate Brandy Wright for consideration as an appointee to the Planning Commission on September 20, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like this choice. I think that Ms. Wright has really shown herself to be someone who's very active in our city government. She has a lot of opinions, both good and bad, about the city, and I think she's going to do a great job on the Planning Commission and help us really bring the Planning Commission, which is doing a wonderful job, further in the 21st century. That should be a great addition. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? All right. If not, there are two boards here. So for the first, the first board is the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This is a mayoral appointment to an open, to a partial term ending June 30, 2024, and Council, I would ask that somebody make the nomination, I'm sorry, the appointment of Lauren Tackett to this board.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to appoint Lauren Tackett to the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Youth Advisory Board. There is an opening, requested appointment of Amanda Amir. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2022. Is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint Amanda Amir to the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider nomination to the city of Sterling Heights Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, this is a mayoral appointment to an opening on the Planning Commission, term ending June 30, 2024. A number of very qualified and eager applicants. I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of them, but I believe the best, the highest qualified and the best candidate is Brandy Wright, who happens to be in attendance in the audience here tonight. So I would appreciate it if somebody could make the motion to nominate Brandy Wright for appointment to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
We're resolved, on the advice of the mayor, to nominate Brandy Wright for consideration as an appointee to the Planning Commission on September 20, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like this choice. I think that Ms. Wright has really shown herself to be someone who's very active in our city government. She has a lot of opinions, both good and bad, about the city, and I think she's going to do a great job on the Planning Commission and help us really bring the Planning Commission, which is doing a wonderful job, further in the 21st century. That should be a great addition. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? All right. If not, there are two boards here. So for the first, the first board is the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This is a mayoral appointment to an open, to a partial term ending June 30, 2024, and Council, I would ask that somebody make the nomination, I'm sorry, the appointment of Lauren Tackett to this board.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to appoint Lauren Tackett to the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Youth Advisory Board. There is an opening, requested appointment of Amanda Amir. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2022. Is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint Amanda Amir to the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That completes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? If not, close that portion, and we'll go into reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Koshubsky.
Nothing's a nightmare.
Council, any reports or new business? Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's that time once again for the annual Clinton River Watershed Council cleanup this year. I have volunteered for several years now in the past, cleaning up the Plum Brook Drain, which has been cleaned up considerably by a combination of local efforts and the county. So this year, they suggested that I support the cleanup of the Clinton River in Dodge Park. So that will be taking place on Saturday, September 18, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and I will be stationed at the senior center, where people can sign in and register and help us spend a couple hours cleaning up the river as it runs through Dodge Park and the park as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Mrs. Zarko.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. A couple of things tonight. First of all, September is get a library card signup month, so our library, it's a national signup, so what our library is participating in is you could either sign up online or come into the office, but you have an opportunity, if you sign up for a new card or use the one that you have, to win a gift certificate. So that's, they're doing that. Another, Stellantis, formerly FCA, is asking all of us to let them know that they're hiring, and they're having a, it would be recruiting, and it's at their Connor Center in Detroit. So we know that we need to keep the assembly lines going, and actually, some of the recruitment that they're doing is for Shap. So we always talk about Sterling Heights residents getting these jobs, and right now, they're begging people to come and apply for these jobs, so I think it's a great opportunity to find something that you want to do. I think the starting salary is $1,578 an hour with medical benefits, prescriptions, coverage, and other benefits as well. So I hope people that are looking for a job might consider going down there, because you might be working in your own backyard when you get the job. The other thing that I want to talk about is, a week from today, I think it is, Wednesday, September 15, the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition, in partnership with our Youth Advisory Board, are hosting a talk about vaping. First of all, I have attended some of the meetings for the drug coalition, so I know how important some of these events that they plan are. The event will be held at the community center at 6:00. They'll have a panel of people there that will be presenting. Our district court judge, Anne Marie Lepore, will be there. Latonya Allen from Henry Ford Hospital will be there. Simone, I think it's Kelnes, from Beaumont, Mex Stefanski from the advisory board, and Barbara Wiegand from the County Traffic Safety Board. So it's important that, one, parents learn more about vaping, the side effects, the long-term effects of what happens with vaping. We talk about addictions all the time, but what was, I think, important to me is when we asked the Youth Advisory Board some of the top points of interest that they had in discussing with not only parents but the community, this was one of them, as well as mental health. So I think it would be a great idea if we supported them in this endeavor, because we learn all the time about different addictions, and it doesn't mean that it could be alcohol, it could be tobacco, it could be this vaping, it could be drugs. It doesn't matter how little. If your body is requiring it and needs it, it's called an addiction. So it's next Wednesday at September 15, at 6:00 at the community center, and I thank you for more information, you can go to their Facebook page. Now, I have a couple of questions. One is for Ms. Ryska. You know, in some of the materials that we received regarding the new passport, I want to say registration, is that what we're calling it, the passport application? Anyway, we received that it was new and for renewed passports. We are not renewing passports. Those still have to be mailed in, isn't that correct?
Yes, so we are officially a passport acceptance agency. We do accept new passport applications, as well as passport applications that have expired for more than five years. If it's been expired for less than five years, or it's just time to renew, we have the documentation that, or applications that people need to fill that out, and then we can also take photos, but the individual would send that themselves.
Okay, so the renewal is the responsibility of the passport holder?
Correct.
Okay. Now, and last, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, September is also Emergency Preparedness Month, and you know, with some of the, like, power outages that we've had recently and the flooding, is, I think it would be a good idea, I know at one time, the fire department put out a emergency prepared booklet, where you actually went through your house, and you had, they gave you a checklist to make sure of things that you had, so if an emergency came up, you were prepared for it. I think it might be a good idea to find that booklet and bring it back and make sure that all the residents have a copy of it. all the residents have a copy of it. And I think now would be a good time to look for it as all the changes with the weather and what's happening to our electrical grid throughout the state. I think all of this would be good for all of our residents. So if we could look into that, I'd really appreciate it. And—oh, also, Sterling Heights Parks and Rec is also hiring, so if anybody needs a job, we're looking for people, too. So the jobs are out there, so if you're looking, we'll find one for you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Arkel. Anyone else, council? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I just wanted to talk about the possibility of a landmark tree ordinance in Sterling Heights. Recently, I was driving down Dodge Park about—it'd be two or three weeks ago, and the apartment complex just north of 15 mile on the east side of the street had cut down now nine landmark trees. They were over 32-inch in width, we believe. They cut them down without a permit, without any notice to the city, but destroyed trees that were, what, 70 feet tall? Beautiful trees. Now, the apartment complex kind of looks like public housing, because there are no trees left by the buildings. And because it violates their site plan, I guess we're going to get them to replant some trees. But I'm wondering if City Administration could or should present us with a new ordinance to kind of protect these landmark trees in Sterling Heights. You know, a tree that's over 32 inches is really a community maker, and it really—I think adds both to curb appeal, to the aesthetics of our community, and also to just the tree canopy that we keep losing. And when we talked to the apartment owner on Dodge Park, they said they cut down those trees, because one of them had fallen in the storm, which I totally understand. A damaged tree needs to come down. But the rest of them, they cut down because, in their words, "They got too big." So we lost, you know, nine trees over 32 inches because—the—or eight trees over 32 inches, because the apartment owner says they got too big. And I think that that really detracts from what we're trying to do, both with our Sustainability Commission, which presented tonight, and also just our current tree—our current tree ordinance works on vacant land, but I want something to protect these landmark trees on built-on land. I don't want to protect every tree. I want to just get the ones that are there, who are really our placemakers in that community. So I don't have an answer for this right now, but I hope that the Administration might consider it and think about it, and maybe present us with an ordinance, because driving by that apartment complex now on Dodge Park, it looks completely different, and not for the better. And I think that if it was a condo and not an apartment, maybe this wouldn't have happened, because the condo owners would have said, "You're costing me value." But the apartment complex's answer to having giant trees to maintain was simply to chop them all down, which I don't think benefits anyone. To go along with that, I've been out talking to my neighbors, because it's just an election year, and one thing that I've really talked with them about is consumer's energy has been replacing gas lines into homes throughout our community. And they come through later, and they re-sod the grass, but they haven't been doing a very good job. I don't know what kind of grass seed they're using or what they're doing, but I've had multiple complaints from different people in different areas of the community about the reconstruction of their yards, and how they used to have this beautiful lawn, now they have sand and some crabgrass, where consumer's energy came through. And I was wondering if, through the chair, Mr. Vanderpoel, we could contact our rep with consumer's energy and state that a lot of our residents are unhappy with this, and hopefully, they're willing to fix this problem and make sure people's lawns are being restored, because we have a lot of nice homes and nice—we have a nice area in Sterling Heights, and the idea that, through no fault of their own, the homeowner's lawn was destroyed and not replaced is, I think, just unfortunate. One more thing, yesterday was Labor Day. I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day. It's a wonderful day to think about all the things that organized labor have done for our country. We're blessed here in Sterling Heights to have a government mostly run by, you know, organized labor employees. They do a tremendous job, and everyone should take a day out of their life and remember that—it was not by accident. You know, they had to fight for the rights that we have now. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt. I just want to make mention—I'm not sure it was mentioned in Mr.—I don't think it was mentioned in Mr. Vanderpoel's report, but our next City Council meeting is actually on Monday instead of Tuesday. The Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention in Land—Grand Rapids, I'm sorry, starts on Tuesday. So we amended our calendar quite a while back, and our next meeting will be on Monday instead of Tuesday. And I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I just have a couple of brief things. So I did want to congratulate or say—I guess, congratulate all of my Hispanic family and friends that this is Hispanic-American Month. I do have a daughter-in-law who is Hispanic, so that makes my granddaughter Hispanic, and my—her family is my family, so I want to congratulate them, as well as Mr. Yenness, who is one of my favorite Hispanic Americans.
Gracias.
Donata. And so, to all of them, congratulations and happy month. And then also, I had a really interesting call on my way to here—from work today—from a lady who wanted to know if I was interested in selling my home on my cellphone. I'm like, "How did you even know that was me?" But she wanted to sell me my home—or to buy my home, excuse me, for $100,000 more than its value cash. And I was like, "Well, thank you, but no, because that means I would have to buy something." It was probably overvalued as well, and I'm not leaving. I'm staying where I am, probably till I'm dusty and cold, and you're going to have to carry me out in a little bag. But with that, I thought, "Wow, that's kind of interesting." And it's not the first call I've had. I've had a couple of calls over the last couple of months. So I—that was really nice to hear that our property values, at least for the short term, are pretty high. And so I'm just—I'm glad to see that our property values are good. I think they're overly inflated. They will probably come down. I don't expect them to stay at that extra $100,000 above what they would normally be. But it's good to see that our values are staying high. I would not—I would caution anyone out there, "Don't do it." I would not recommend—that's probably—that it's a good practice to think that you're going to get that. It's probably—it very well could be a scam, but it's nice to hear that some people think that's a—some—there's value in that—for that high. So at least our property values sound like they may be a little bit higher than what they have been, but keep your homes, people. I would recommend that and keep your property, just in case. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just let everyone know that we have six police officers, sponsored by our FOP, running in the Law Enforcement Torch Run. They started on September 13th. They're going to be running 730 miles in five days. They're required to run five miles every eight hours. So this is to fund the Special Olympics. So if you're interested in donating to the cause, you can contact Lieutenant Dave Allen at (586) 446-2892. And remember, your donation goes to the Special Olympics. We'd kind of like to be the winners there. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Thank you, council. I just want to say, in conclusion of this meeting, congratulations to all the parents out there who have their kids going back to school. They're going back today, and it's a great, great day to have them back into a nice structure for the rest of the school year, and hoping—hoping, of course, that it stays that way this year. So that's all I've got. Thank you for participating in the meeting tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
They've moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.